Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone, to the Grand Rapids Community College Board of Trustees meeting for Monday, November 17th, 2025. We are, I believe, one minute late here, but that's just because we had a very productive and robust work session next door. So, welcome. Do any board members or President Trezenberg have any guests here today? Seeing none today. We'll move on to board business. Our first order of business is approval of our agenda. This is a time to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate consideration, if necessary. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? If there are none, and I see none, may I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion for support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving today's agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda is set. Now, we will open the meeting for public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board, you may do so at this time. The board will hear comments at this point in our meeting related to today's agenda only, and we cannot respond to your comments at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name. No comments today. Thank you. Next order. Property tax resolution. John Globoker, our VP of Finance and Administration, will talk to us about our property tax resolution.
Right. Well, good afternoon, members of the board, President Trezenberg, Amy. It's good to see everyone. Very happy to be here in this continued practice by the institution of imposing a summer tax levy. This is, as I mentioned, a continued practice, so asking for your consideration for this resolution. What does that mean? The Board of Trustees has the legal authority through two acts, the Community College Act of 1966 and the School Code of 1976, to allow the institution to levy 100% of property tax in summer. What does that really mean for the institution? So, there's opportunity for our taxing authorities to bill in summer and winter. We're asking that all 100% be billed in the summer. What that also does for us is it provides a nice steady cash flow at the beginning of the fiscal year, which I will talk about when we get to the finance update later. Happy to answer any questions. Again, thank you for your consideration for this resolution.
John, I ought to know this, but those outlying areas, Berry County, Ionia, Alleghen, New Mexico, that are also supporting the college by the... Is that the same levy? Would they be subject to... Is it a uniform levy, or is it very?
Excuse me. It would be a uniform levy.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Siegel. Any other questions? Thank you, John. The resolution that we are approving is in our board packet. May I now have a motion to accept the property tax resolution as presented?
Move. Word.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is adopted. Thank you, John. Next on our agenda is approval of the consent items. May I have a motion to approve those consent items as presented?
Move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Purchases over $100,000 also in today's agenda for trustees review prior to the meeting. May I have a motion to approve the purchases over $100,000 as presented?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board officer elections. Based on what our work session in the room next door this afternoon, we are going to have a transition of officers on the Board of Trustees effective on January 1st. We will have the... We discussed this and voted at our work session. No, we didn't. We did not vote. We talked about this, and we self-nominated. And people who wanted officer positions raised their hand. We talked about it. The slate for officers starting on January 1st, 2026, is for chairperson, trustee Salvador Lopez; for vice-chairperson, trustee Kathleen Brynsma, myself; for treasurer, trustee Cheryl Siegel; and for secretary, current secretary, current treasurer Cheryl Siegel; and for secretary, current secretary, Daniel Williams. So, may I have a motion to approve this slate of officers starting on January 1st, 2026?
So moved.
Second. All those... Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have new officers for January 1st, 2026. Congratulations. Board policy review. On a rolling basis, this board evaluates its policies. Our policies are Rosetta Stone, our constitution. The board sets the policies, which are... They govern how we do our job. They govern how we evaluate the president on an annual basis. In this cycle, we looked at three policies: board job description, monitoring, executive performance, and president's job description. We discussed ideas and changes, and they have been proposed. And in this meeting, this was our second reading of these policies. We need to do a reading of them one more time, correct?
As I understand the process, the first and second read comes to the regular meeting.
Okay.
So, today would be the first read of those proposed changes.
Okay. Today is the first read of the proposed changes. We do need one more reading of those proposed changes at a public meeting like this. So, first, we're going to approve the changes that we discussed, and then we are going to table it so that we can approve them at our next meeting.
Move, and then table.
Move, and then table. Yes. So, we'll walk through that. May I have a motion to approve the updated policies with regard to board job description, monitoring, executive performance, and president job description?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Support.
Any discussion? We will need to vote to table this motion so that we can comply with our policy requiring two public meeting readings.
Motion to table.
Any second?
Word.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That was for our board policy description. Do we do it policy by policy? I think we just covered all three.
Your motion covered all three.
We're done with that. Thank you. Okay. Amendment to the APSS contract. Brett Meyer, general counsel, will tell us about that.
Good afternoon. I have, for your consideration and approval today, a proposed amendment to the contract, the collective bargaining agreement with the GRCC Alliance of Professional Support Staff. The MOU, which would provide the amendment, would create a pool of, upon request, certified employees within the union, within the bargaining unit, who would be available to provide translation and interpretation services on a frontline basis throughout our campus. In connection with that pool, or the creation of that pool, providing those services, those employees would be paid $100 per month on a flat fee basis. There is no limitation on the number of employees who may become part of that pool, and there's a language certification requirement that Human Resources will work on with those employees. This is, we think, a wonderful agreement that provides kind of further structure around how we provide services to folks in really critical areas for whom English may not be their first language. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I will say, with your approval, the agreement in the MOU, the amendment to the contract, would become effective on January 1st of 2026.
This is something that we talked a little bit earlier, but just if you could talk about the context in which this happens, during already scheduled work time, not additional hours?
Sure. Sure. So, right now, when we require frontline translation services, the college is... or interpretation services, the college is looking to folks who are providing that or have that knowledge are able to do that, but there is no kind of defined pool, so it is on more of an ad hoc basis. That work is occurring right now during an employee's regularly scheduled work hours. This MOU contemplates that this work would also, or this agreement would also occur during employee's regularly scheduled work hours. If these services are requested or required outside of an employee's normal workday, then they would be entitled to overtime in the same way that they would be entitled to overtime for any other services outside of their workday.
Thank you. Just one clarifier. I heard you say interpreting and translation at the beginning, but as far as I know and understand this, it's interpreting, meaning the voice interpretation versus the written translation, correct?
Yes.
Thank you for those questions. Any more?
Do we know how many languages are spoken at GRCC, and then what are the most common languages that we need these services for?
I do not know, but I can find out, trustee Bream, how many languages are spoken. I know that the most common language after English would be Spanish. We have certain obligations under Title IX and under other federal civil rights laws, state civil rights laws, to make certain materials available to a population of our students and employees, our community members. If it exceeds a certain threshold, that may speak a secondary language, another language. Spanish is the language that we have an obligation to make certain materials available in. I don't know how many other languages are spoken here. We are a, thankfully, a broad and diverse institution, and so we anticipate that, number one, we don't anticipate... This is not limited just to folks who speak Spanish. We also are including here things like ASL, American Sign Language, and other languages that, you know, might be necessary in order to be able to facilitate students, prospective students, members of our community with getting connected with the college or the services they need.
Thank you.
Thank you, general counsel Meyer. May I have a motion to approve the update to the APSS contract?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of amending the APSS contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, we're going to do a roll call.
Trustee Bream?
Yes.
Trustee Brynsma?
Yes.
Trustee Lopez?
Yes.
Lovelate Mitchell is absent.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
You Siegel?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Dr. Trezenberg, president's report.
Thank you, and we'll show some slides to illustrate this report. Thank you for the opportunity to bring an update on the work of the college. Next slide, please. We are deeply into the fall semester. Others would say pushing to the finish line this full week of classes, a couple of days next week, Thanksgiving break, and then a full week after that before we get to exams. So, faculty, students, and staff are all pushing hard. Next slide, please. So, there are lots of stressors that arise, and sometimes some unusual stressors. As I said, one more week to Thanksgiving, and then one week at the end. The federal government shutdown raised a lot of concerns about the access to SNAP funds and the daily needs that that might have affected. We're pleased to see that the government shutdown is ending, and those SNAP benefits should be restored in short order. The campus has a keen interest in the presidential search process and its outcome, of course, and I appreciate the work of the screening committee towards that end. And we're pleased to announce the launch of our on-campus health clinic, which is open a couple of days a week, and once we're more into a settled pattern, I'll be able to give you a report on the use of that clinic, the number of hours, the number of students, the kinds of incidents that we address there. Next slide, please. Student activities have been really robust this semester in athletics, in arts, in the research. The volleyball team is heading to the national tournament this week. The theater program launched a great performance last weekend, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Some of our students who participated in summer research presented their work in poster sessions that I know has attended. So, just lots of good things happening with our students on campus this semester. Next slide, please. I'm also pleased to recognize a number of our... several of our leaders who serve our community particularly well. Dean John Van Elst has been named to the West Michigan Works Board. Dean Kristi Haake has been named to the Talent Council for West Michigan Technology. Just two examples of the many ways that our faculty and our staff engage, not only with their work on campus, but with the community surrounding us. Next slide, please. That recognition extends to the Board of Trustees as well. They didn't know this was coming. Our president emeritus, Juan Oliveras, and board chair, Brandy Lovelate Mitchell, were recognized by the Grand Rapids Community Foundation a couple of weeks ago. Trustee Kathleen Brynsma, chairing today's meeting, was elected to the Board of Directors for ACCT, the American Association of Community College Trustees. And trustee Daniel Williams was named to the list of Crane's Top 200 Influential Leaders in West Michigan, and I'm delighted to work with people who are so engaged in the community and doing so well that they warrant these kinds of recognition. So, thank you. Next slide, please. Another bit of good news. Our marketing and communications department does outstanding work, and it's just not me as the president bragging about that, but the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations made that really clear in awarding five gold medallions and two silver medallions to our department. The Grand Rapids Community Foundation report was a gold medallion winner for the fifth year in a row. I commend our marketing and communications department for all of that. And one of the staff members, Kaylee Potgater, was named a rising star by that National Council. She's the one who leads a lot of our social media presence, including, for some reason, the president on TikTok, which I had never imagined. Next slide, please. A lot of the work of the college is accomplished by a number of groups on campus. Now, I'm held responsible to the board for executing against the strategic plan, and I wanted the board to understand some of the ways that we've been accomplishing that and the groups that actually make it happen. So, you see here a diagram that represents the relationships, overlapping and intersecting relationships of the executive leadership team, the cabinet, strategic leadership team, and the academic governing council. I'm going to describe the work of each of those in the next few slides, including some of their recent accomplishments, so that you get a sense of how we are moving to accomplish the ends that the board has to find. Next slide, please. We'll begin with the executive leadership, which are the vice presidents that serve with me on the executive leadership team. One of the things that we've addressed robustly is communication with the campus community. We've convened a number of town halls. We have drop-in sessions on a frequent basis, and those have been productive, I think, in communication in both directions. Within the executive leadership team, we continue to develop leadership principles and leadership practices so that that team continues to strengthen its work individually and collectively. We're turning our attention to the presidential transition planning, making sure that we have the tactical plan put together and a number of tasks that each of us have in mind to complete as we anticipate the arrival of a new president. The executive leadership team continues to monitor the federal directives coming out of Washington and the college response to those. We had input on legislative priorities that will be defined by the Michigan Community College Association. They had a long list of potential topics that the community colleges might like to advocate in Lansing. We registered our votes on those. MCCA is putting that package together now. We should hear about that in about a month or so. And then each week, we hear reports from each of the units on what's happening in their sector and on major project reviews, and each week we look at sponsorship requests from outside agencies, and we make decisions on which of those are most closely aligned with the college's mission and which of those would be appropriate for us to support. Next slide, please. The representation of that committee, you can see on this slide, is the president and the vice presidents. The president leads that, and the ELT advises the presidents on some of these decisions. Next slide, please. We've got... Let's go on. We touched on those. The cabinet addresses administrative policy approval. In recent work, they've looked at the web accessibility policy, food and beverage policy, furniture policy, facilities and grounds. These are the kinds of policies that should not and do not come to the board for approval. These are administrative policies, and they get addressed at the cabinet. Cabinet also hears reports from some of their work groups on data governance, emergency planning and preparation, and the marketing campaign in recent meetings. Next slide, please. So, that membership includes representation from each of the divisions led by the executive teams. The president leads that, and their primary responsibility is to approve administrative policies that are brought by an administrative policy committee that does the hard work of grinding out the language before that comes to cabinet. Next slide, please. And we've touched on these already. Next slide. Strategic leadership team is responsible for, or does a lot of the groundwork in implementing the strategic plan. We've met recently on the Lake Shore campus, and we make sure that the Lake Shore has the academic and student services they need. We review the strategic plan metrics. How are we measuring our success for the strategic plan? We'll bring some of those results to the board in a future meeting. We've looked at a strategic enrollment and retention management plan. We're concerned about the wraparound services for student basic needs. There's a meeting going on today as we speak with representatives from the state on that topic. And we've looked at some of the hiring practices, new employee experiences, and recruitment and retention efforts of the Human Resources Department. Next slide, please. So, the lead... Strategic leadership team has members from across campus, positions held in leadership positions at many different areas of the campus work and campus teams. The associate provost of instructional support and institutional planning, Jen Batten chairs that along with me, and as we said, the primary responsibility of that group is the implementation of the strategic plan. Next slide, please. And we summarized these already. Let's step past that. Finally, the academic governing council reviews and revises and approves academic policies. May sound like you've heard this already. We had a group that approves administrative policies. That's the cabinet. This is the group that approves academic policies, and so it's mostly drawn from the academic realm. Recent work has looked at the common syllabus template, admissions and placement policy, and the policy regarding corequisite courses, two courses that have to be taken in combination by students. Next slide, please.
Often, does this group meet?
Academic governance meets every month during the academic year, so it's probably five or six times a year.
Thank you.
Includes the provost, the deans, associate deans, registrar, department heads, program directors, and a number of other elected faculty and adjunct faculty members. They work on a rather strict rules of order that they follow well. There are times when a given member may be absent, and so a proxy may be appointed, but those proxies are duly registered for each meeting, and the president attends only as a guest. Next slide, please. And so, we summarized these already. So, that gives you a sense of the kind of work that's being done on campus for which I am held responsible. It's a privilege to lead that, but it's not just me doing that work. It's a huge team that does, in my opinion, really remarkable work in those areas. I'd be happy to answer further questions on that.
Thank you, Dr. Trezenberg. Any questions? Comments? Thank you for that comprehensive report. I really liked the circles with the various teams. Thank you for that visual. Monitoring report.
Yes, thank you. And for the annual purchasing report, I'd like to call Paula Gleason-Zief, who's the director of purchasing, to the podium to report.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for letting me take another spin at this. We've gone around the calendar, and I'm back again. You can go to the next slide, class. But it looks different this year than what it has in the past when I've come up here and spoke. We have spoke about our women-owned, our veterans-owned, our minority-owned. Well, as we're all very aware, GRCC is no longer collecting that information because of the laws that have been stated, and so we're trying to make sure that we're abiding by them. So, you're going to see a different report come from me this year, and hopefully, it's going to give you some different information and that you may say, "We might want to keep that. We might want to know that information." Because basically, purchasing really wants to make sure our vendors are meeting our policies, our mission, and we want to become partners with them. Next slide. So, I don't think you've ever seen this, but this is really a gauge. We, this year, have done double what we have normally done on RFPs and RFQs. A lot of that has to do with facilities and our great projects that we're doing in the Ford Rec Center and LRC, and now College Park Plaza. So, it has jumped. But also, I would like to let you know that this may change. These numbers may go down next year because of the change that we did in the policy. You no longer have the 25,000. You're going to have the 40,000, and we won't need to put those RFPs out for the smaller amounts. So, they may change, but again, I think we're around that, you know, 28, 30 mark. But again, this year, we were a lot more than that. Next slide. Another thing that you might be interested in is, I wonder how many POs that purchasing department puts out. Again, this is going to maybe change next year because of the policy, but as you can see, we're pretty steady with our POs that we put out, and that's what we want because the dollar amount that it costs to put out every single purchase order costs the college money. So, we want to make sure that we're trying to stay status quo, keep those levels where they need to be. I just want you to know that these are POs. These are not things that I've ordered on Amazon. This is not pro-card information. So, do know that we also have that, that we should start to take a look at also, along with what we are putting out directly as a purchase order. Next slide.
Is there a dollar threshold before you're required to do a PO?
Yeah. Anything $2,500 or over means to have a PO. Good question. Thank you. So, what we're seeing here is out of that 1,260, 17% of those purchase orders you saw last year or you approved last year. But more important, 83% dollar-wise, dollar spend, everyone in this room had a chance to take a look at and ask questions about, and I think that really shows how important the board is to what purchasing does, that you're very much aware of what is being purchased for the college, and I truly appreciate that. Next slide. As usual, we, in purchasing, try to make sure we're on as many councils and committee groups so that we are know... We know what's going on with our community. We want to be involved in our community. You'll notice a number of different ones. We have used a lot of the same ones over the year, but I want to touch base on a couple of things. We work with a lot of departments, and that's really important. We work with a lot of departments, and that's really important. Marketing and communication. We worked with them this year on RFP, and it brought a Grand Rapids-based digital advertising company to them. And so that was a really good thing, to make that community grow. Another thing is that Facilities Department went with us to a number of these Meet the Buyers, and we talked to a small business here in Grand Rapids that Facilities was able to partner with and have all our new radios that they use. So that was, that was a good thing, too. Next slide. So we talk about community. And on this slide, you will see all the vendors that we have used in the United States last year. And you'll see that that is a lot in West Michigan, in Michigan, Illinois, Ohio. Hate to say Ohio, but Ohio. And, and I think that's important, that we're doing business all throughout the United States. Next slide. But I think it's more important that you see how much business the college is doing here in the community. And if you look at it, $24.4 million was spent in Grand Rapids alone. And I think if you can click on that. Maybe not. Well, here's Michigan. Let's talk about Michigan overall. Overall, the money that the college spends, 80% of it stays right here in Michigan. And that, I think, is a real plus. When you're talking community colleges, how much can we grow our businesses and then grow our student base by using those businesses? It's important for us to take a look at how much we're doing in Michigan. Thank you for finding Grand Rapids. Grand Rapids, again, we did $24.4 million. A lot of them, yes, are contractors, but, class, if you want to click on any of them, I don't care which one you clicked on. You can see here, we, thank you. With the zoo, we spent a certain amount of money. We can now drill down on this and see exactly where we're spending our money within Grand Rapids and the outline area. And then if you can click on Holland, if you're able to. We've done another, another 1.8 million with Holland. And I think that will only grow as we have more students out there. We need more things out there. I think you'll see that number grow. But I, I think this is a great way to look at our vendor base, and that we are trying to stay in West Michigan as much as possible. Now, we have, this year, coming up, and you'll see that in my next slide, we have changed our, we have changed how we are, you can click to the next. There we go. What we're trying to look at for next year, we have changed our vendor application so that we are able to collect this location information so that we have more data to look at. And I think that that's important to know, because, like I said at the beginning, we are no longer collecting those other things like women-owned based, et cetera. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to look at something different. That program and what we are just recently started looking at is a, a contract holding library. Both of those came out of a study that was done in January. And we are working with the company to make sure that those two things can go into practice, which I think will be, in many ways, especially the contract holding library, I think that that will become a best practice for us, which I think is real positive. The other thing is, is that you probably remember, we had a supplier inclusion team. And because we're no longer collecting that data, we've, we've kind of dissolved it or put it on hold, I should say. We would like to focus more on community opportunities, those things like the Meet the Buyer, the Hispanic Council, those sort of things. We'd like to see us get more involved and have that team then go that direction so that we're more out in the community. And that's our report this year, but I'll be happy to take any questions.
Wonder if you are, and I appreciated the list of all the different associations that you're continuing to stay in touch with, and, and wondering if you are tracking the number of opportunities that come out of each of those individual associations?
That's a good idea, and I think that we could probably do that easily enough.
The curiosity there is, obviously, we're not tracking, you know, gender or race or veteran status, but, but through those focused.
Through those councils and, and committees and things. That's a good idea. I can check into that for next year.
So as your, are you prevented from collecting any supplier information at all? Is that what I'm understanding you say? And so for like these more outreach-based initiatives in the construction end of things, are you interacting at all with the Michigan Building Trades or those construction councils at all?
On our construction vendors that we then decide on, they're secondaries. They do look at that. And Jim, do you have any others that you would like to add to that?
Like associated builders and contractors and other organizations like that.
And then, is there a way, when you're doing those, those outreach events, to track if those contractors have sustainable apprenticeship programs, for example, like are we feeding?
We do ask, yeah, we do ask that. We don't necessarily keep data on it, but that is one thing that, a lot of them, like when you do a Meet the Buyer, there's a lot of them that will offer that up as information right away.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Yes, we have no institutional reports to bring to the board today. So next, I'd like to call John Globocker, Vice President of Finance and Administration, to the podium to present the finance update.
Glad to be back with you. Now, we're a third of the way through the fiscal year. Great progress. The packet that you have before you has financial data on all of our funds through October 31 of this fiscal year, so beginning July 1 through October 31. We're in a strong financial position overall. Our cash flow is, is well-positioned. If we could move to the next slide. So being that one-third, I, I wanted to point out, especially when we look at the general operating budget, which we'll go over in the next couple of slides, as we talked about with the property tax resolution, where a lot of that cash is flowing on the front end of the fiscal year. It helps with our cash flow. And you'll, you'll be able to see, and it's demonstrated in our financials, a lot of the revenues are generated and received at the front end of the fiscal year, which helps throughout the year in meeting our liabilities. Our expenses are more evenly balanced over, over the fiscal year. So 68% of our revenues have already been received, being only one-third of the way through the fiscal year, whereas 23% of our expenses on the general fund have posted to our, our chart of accounts. So there's a unique juxtaposition there relative to revenues and expenses at this point of the year. The next slide is our general operating revenues. So you'll see the budget on the left, and then the actuals that have posted through that October 31 date, representing that 68%. So 91 million of the 134 million for our general operating budget has posted thus far. And then on the subsequent slide, our expenses, 133 million of expenses budgeted, and we've posted just a little over 30 million. So you can see the disparities, the disparities, the difference between the revenues and expenses, which means really a good position for us, for the college. So I wanted to tie that back to our property tax resolution then, and thank you for, again, approving that resolution. That helps with that, that cash flow on the front end. Throughout the packet are the financial highlights from all the variances for all of the funds. Happy to answer any of those questions, but I thought it would be very helpful for us to acknowledge the early part of this fiscal year in the revenues to expenses for the general operating.
Thank you, John. Questions? Comments? Thank you for this breakdown. Just incredible. And I, I want to go back to Paula's report. Thank you for that, the map, showing the businesses that we use here in our region. It's another piece of evidence of our economic impact. John, thank you for this.
The total non-salaries. Who's included in that?
Yeah, non-salaries include fringe benefits, all of our supplies and expenses. That would be utilities, any rents, leases that we pay.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. For this month, we have no report from the Faculty Association. We'll see them at another time. But we do have a representative from the Student Government. I'd like to call Amelia Haywood, Student Government Vice President, to the podium to present the Student Government report.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, President Trezenberg, and the GRCC community. My name is Amelia Haywood, and I'm very honored to serve as Vice President of Student Government. Like many students here, my journey through higher education has not been traditional, but I'm proud to represent students whose past may not fit the mold and advocate for the diverse experiences that make our campus unique and vibrant. As a career student, LGBTQIA+ issues are deeply personal to me. I believe in the power of honoring all voices and creating spaces where students feel welcomed, seen, and valued. And my goal as Vice President of Student Government is to ensure that students, regardless of background, know that they belong at GRCC. We live in a time where being part of a marginalized community can feel isolating or even unsafe. That's why building community through advocacy is at the heart of our work. At Student Government, we strive to connect students with resources that will support them holistically. This semester, we've been busy. We've kicked off our, with our events with Constitution Day on September 17th, distributing hundreds of pocket constitutions across campus. It was a fun and engaging way to celebrate civic education and connect directly with students. On September 29th, we joined homecoming tabling at both Maine and Lake Shore campuses. At Maine, we handed out gift cards to the Quiet Cafe and the Raider Grill to encourage participation in these campus-wide events. At Lake Shore, we brought celebration to the students with pizza and Jimmy John's, because we know that there's, can be a disconnect between the two campuses, and we think that there should be equitable access to our events across campuses. Homecoming Week was truly a success. Student Government partnered closely with the Campus Activities Board to support and participate in events. It was a powerful display of collaboration and campus pride, and it strengthened the bonds among our students and student leadership programs. We've continued hosting our, our Student Leader Town Halls every third Wednesday of this month, and these, of each month. And these meetings have been seen to have a strong turnout and meaningful dialogue among students. And at our last meeting, we were honored to be joined by Dr., President Trezenberg, and we asked for some student input on some AGC policies. And this is an important step to making sure student voice, student voices are heard in institutional decision-making. Our next town hall is Wednesday, November 19th at 4:00 p.m., and we hope that we have a good turnout again. Later that, oh, sorry. On October 13th, we partnered with the Woodruff Center to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. Through tabling and outreach, we shared educational resources and promoted upcoming events that focused on inclusion and cultural awareness. Later that month, on October 28th, we hosted our Vote Early Day Celebration. Students enjoyed hot chocolate, snacks, and civic engagement resources. It was inspiring to see so many of our students take steps to make their voices heard. We continue this momentum by November 4th with our Election Day tabling, which was another opportunity to help educate about civic engagement resources. On Veterans Day, Student Government was very honored to attend the Veterans Center event and show our appreciation for GRCC student veterans. Looking ahead, we're prepared for our November 20th event focused on student support. We recognize that this is a challenging time for many students, and we will be distributing lunches and connecting students directly with resources here at GRCC. At the core of everything we do is a simple truth. We love our students, and we are committed to uplifting and empowering the GRCC student body through advocacy, connection, and care. Thank you for your continued support of Student Government in the work that we do to serve this incredible community.
Thank you, Amelia. Questions?
Amelia, I'm, I'm impressed by the breadth of what Student Government does. It's quite extraordinary. And thank you for Constitution Day on September 17th and honoring that and distributing constitutions to student body. That is vital, whether they read it or not. Just to have it, I think, is an important statement. It's very commendable and also honoring veterans. Thank you and your colleagues for that.
I think you also said that we're going to have a town hall on the 19th?
Yes.
So typically, describe what happens at the town hall.
So town hall is a place where we can have all of our student orgs, and all students are welcome to join us. And we talk about Student Government. We give updates on everything that we're doing. We, they're code, they're joint between Student Government and Campus Activities Board. So like, for instance, like last time, we talked about some AGC policies that were asked for student feedback on. I think the one, the main one last time was regarding the syllabus template. And then we asked students for their feedback and how, like their lived experience here. And then we also, this is an opportunity for students to ask for allocation requests from the Campus Activities Fee Budget. And then Campus Activities Board has a time to share about all the events that they have to connect students and campus. And then we should have a time for general concerns and comments. And then we also, it's also a place where students can share from different student orgs, things that are happening, so like they can promote their own events. So it's basically like, I always think of it as like a community hub. Yeah.
Where do those take place?
They take place on RJF 108 and on Zoom.
Thank you. Anything else? I, Amelia, I want to say, these are the themes that came up more than once in your presentation, which was beautiful. Belonging, bonds, community, advocacy, civic engagement, empower, care, uplift, and lived experience. And I just commend you and the Student Government on those values and encourage you to hold on tight to those as you go into your next phases and seasons. Hold on.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's time for the Board Chair Report. And I am the Board Vice Chair, and I'm sitting in and chairing the meeting for Board Chair Love Lady Mitchell. And I will take the liberty to report on the fact that the Screening Committee has completed its work. And the board now is looking at candidates. And we have a public meeting, a special public meeting, set for November 25th here. And we will be deliberating on next steps with regard to our new president. Presidential interviews. That's it. Community connections. Any communications to the board?
No communications.
Thank you. Open comment. We will open the meeting up for public comment now. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address the board regarding any matter, you may do so at this time. Please come to the podium and state your name. I remind you that all comments are limited to three minutes, and the board will not be able to respond to your comments today. Anyone? Seeing none. Final board comments.
I want to thank Dr. Trezenberg and so much of the Grand Rapids Community College community that showed up for the Veterans Day celebration as a veteran. That really meant a lot to see so many familiar faces. I mean, this community is remarkable. You all show up for everything and everyone, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I don't think he's here, but I wanted to just give a thank you
I don't think he's here, but I wanted to just give a thank you to Jonathan Resendis for recently being a part of the community in terms of leading via his work in AI and representing GRCC, I believe a Latino entrepreneur convening that took place in Grand Rapids. And it's just always great to see faculty and staff in community showcasing some of the talent that we have here. So just wanted to say thank you to him and all of you that are out in the community exhibiting that talent.
I want to take this opportunity, just as an addendum to what I just mentioned in the Board Chair Report, to thank the Screening Committee. Co-chair of the Screening Committee, Professor Mary, is here in the back. Thank you so much for co-chairing. Your input is invaluable. The time you put in, the labor, the insight that you provided is essential, and thank you. And corollary to that, I would just encourage everybody to stay involved as we go through the next phases of our presidential search. Thank you. Anything else? We are adjourned. Thank you.